Our next speaker is Daisy Hugh. Daisy?
Yes, my name is Daisy Hughes and this is my first time speaking before the city council. Unfortunately, it's regarding my own personal safety and that of my family. I participated on Saturday in the protest that was held by NEST, Neighbors Ensuring Stone Lake Transparency. We were protesting against the California North State University Hospital and we were protesting in front of Mayor Lee's appreciation event which was also being held at the CNU location. Overall, it was a positive protest. We feel that we were giving voices to residents who felt that they weren't heard during the information session the day before. Unfortunately, during that protest, a man by the name of Ty Sorcey, a city employee, walked through us, intimidated us, took pictures of us and our children. I thought to myself, "What am I doing here? I don't protest things. Why am I exposing myself this way? And thank God I didn't bring my small child here, which I was going to that day. I thought it'd be a good learning experience." I am wondering, is that man going to come after me? He said that he was keeping track. Have I put my family in danger? Mayor Lee, I hold you accountable for this. That was your man. We were standing in front of a building where you were and your right-hand man came out and intimidated us. I voted for you. I voted for you because you are the first among American mayor in our nation and I thought you would be rooting for the underdog, but you don't. You root for the large businesses who are coming after destroying our small businesses and not acting in the interest of the residents. I have no doubt that you will do whatever it takes to get CNU their hospital. And I am speaking right now on the record to make sure that my family and I are protected and an incident like this doesn't happen again because NEST will throw another protest and it's going to be larger and I'm going to bring my son. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Roger Warwick. Roger?
Yeah, I'm also, my name is Roger Warwick. I'm here to speak on the hospital myself. I noticed that when I went to the meeting at the Asian Sports Center, they handed out a map where the hospital was going to be. And the hospital is going to be on the end of a dead-end street, so there's only one way in, one way out. So to me, that's a fire safety hazard because now the fire trucks coming in off of west Tarron will not be able to get into the neighborhood of Stone Lake because they'll have to travel through the traffic of the hospital to get to the neighbors that they have to serve. Once they get in there and serve that neighborhood, then they have to get out, they have to face the same traffic coming out. So I can't see any common sense at all to put a hospital on a dead-end street. It just makes no logic sense to me at all. So for the safety of the people that are in Stone Lake, please do not put this hospital in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Jason Stelling. Following Jason is Melinda Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Lee, I memorized that well. I was too, I was at the protest in front of your party for your donors and I had my children with me. And it reminded me of 19, early 1960s when I see these old films of the FBI taking pictures of people like Martin Luther King and other civil rights activists. It's appalling. We're a bunch of suburban parents, teachers, soccer moms, retired folks. We don't, we're not threatening you. Are you afraid of us? I'm not afraid of you. You shouldn't be afraid of me. It's disgusting. I've seen you at the Martin, I took my son, older son to the Martin Luther King March. I've seen you up on the dais there, taking pictures, show voting or whatever you do there. It's hypocritical, very hypocritical. And the hospital's a bad idea there. I'm just pissed off. Hey, I should be on your side or you should be on my side. I'm Democrat all my life. This is not Democratic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Melinda Robinson. Following Melinda is Amreet Sandhu.
Good evening, council members. I am here to speak my concerns over California North State University's proposed hospital. I want to make sure that I accurately capture the proposed changes to the zoning code that has an impact on CNU's project. The current code states that healthcare facilities and government facilities shall be prohibited from building in a flood district. City council may approve exception to this if it determines operation of a proposed facility will be substantially compromised in an alternative location. Your proposed change is going to state that to the extent feasible, a new essential public facility shall be located outside the flood area or shall be constructed so as to minimize damage to said facilities if located in such an area. For purposes of this section, essential public facilities include and is not limited to hospitals, healthcare facilities, emergency shelters, fire stations, emergency command centers, and emergency communication facilities. I have to ask, why the change to the current code? What prompted this specific code to require an amendment? What happened or has happened that created the need for this change? Could it be that a couple of years ago, there was a conversation that took place between our city leaders and a proposed business like CNU where it was determined that this amendment was needed in order to enable their hospital to be built? So here we have another clue to the truth. For CNU to succeed with their facility, the location requires rezoning. And now that there's a proposed change to the zoning code, interesting coincidence? I cannot think of any business in their right mind that would front millions and millions of dollars to purchase land absent some concrete understanding that their project would proceed as planned. Somewhere CNU got it in their heads at this hospital is a green light. Mr. Sue, our district representative, said in an Elk Grove article that the city's role is limited only to the application process, yet our city leaders participated in the press conference announcing the project. Our district representative hosted an informational meeting that was very choreographed and censored. Our mayor conducted his community appreciation dinner at a CNU facility. CNU's proposed building site requires rezoning and we suddenly have a zoning amendment which further promotes the completion of their project. Our mayor's employee verbally and physically harassed and intimidated peaceful protesters. The actions of Mr. Sorcey that day accurately and perfectly echo the actions of our city leaders and CNU. You have all blazed your way into our peaceful lives with full disregard for your disrespect and disruption. You have all done this with an air of entitlement and an assumed dismissal of our rights. Your conduct and CNU's conduct has led to a serious question of trust and ethics. Your own city code of ethics pledges responsibility, fairness, respect, and honesty. You have a responsibility to the citizens and community of West Elk Grove to protect and preserve the safety, well-being, and quality of our neighborhood. You have not exercised fairness when you promote the destruction of small businesses in our quiet community for profit and what we know so far is merely a gamble of a business for CNU. Your own staff has demonstrated a lack of respect as evidenced by Mr. Sorcey. And as for honesty, this whole process is screaming with lies and we may never get to the truth, but we will continue to demand it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Amreet Sandhu. Amreet? Following Amreet is Jan Swatney Jones.
And Ms. Sandhu submitted a request to have the city code of ethics pulled up while she makes her comments.
Thank you. I just wanted the city code of conduct up there so that you can reference it as I make my talk today. I would like to comment on my experience since I first spoke to you guys on January 9th. It was my first time ever engaging in anything civics, okay? Discussed it at the federal level. I was very untrusting of you guys at the city level. I came to speak because something's really going to impact my community and impact my quality of life. At the city council meeting on the 9th, the PR representative for CNU took pictures of residents who spoke against the hospital. When I approached him and asked him why he took pictures, he said he was just recording the session. When asked why he specifically took a picture of me, Mr. Wood said that you were just in the picture. And I felt intimidated that day, intimidated. At the community forum on February 26th, held by Councilman Swin, and I appreciate you for doing that, Councilmember Nguyen, or Wen, sorry, who's not here, embraced the same gentleman with a hug and when she arrived to the event. On Sunday, the 23rd, I also attended the protest and helped organize it. Mayor Lee, we knew you were having your reelection party there and we wanted to make a statement, okay? This is all part of the democratic process that you released in your statement following this. This was, the police were dispatched and I was able to speak to the sergeant. He said we were fine, we weren't doing anything wrong. Mr. Wagstaff actually came out and offered water and said, "Hey, this is just part of the process." And I was like, you know, thanks. Then your political appointee forcefully walked past me. I waved to him, told him to take a better picture of me and say hi to you and gave him my name. What bothered me was he continued to walk through the crowd in the middle of the sidewalk. His right, it's a public sidewalk, he made it very clear to us that it was a public sidewalk. He walked past me and approached another group of women. And at that point, he did engage in taking some more pictures. And at that point, some of the mothers got very nervous because their small children were in it. My two teenage girls were there, they actually asked him, "Please don't take pictures of us, we're minors." He said, "This is a public sidewalk." They weren't part of the protest, they were doing stats homework at Hiti, which would be demolished if CNU gets built. They also told him that they felt uncomfortable. Mayor Lee, is this how your representatives treat residents and your constituents when we do not agree with your point of view? The city council is supposed to be a neutral party in the development and this was stated not only by Mr. Swin, but the other leaders who came out and spoke to us about the process. They said it was their job to be neutral and to represent the city and find the best resolution and address any mitigations if that needed to be. But I ask you, is it neutral to hold your reelection party at CNU, whose CEO and affiliates contributed to your campaigns? I checked the 460s, there was a lot of contributions. And that's your right, you have every right to accept it. But are you truly representing your constituents? What accountability do you have, Mr. Lee, when your appointees harassing and intimidating residents who are peacefully assembling? Am I supposed to stop opposing because I don't agree with you? Do I have to not feel safe in my own city? I mentioned to everybody at Mr. Swin's forum, I used to manage a Taco Bell down the street for Bob Whitelock. I've been here for years. I put myself through school. I'm now a healthcare provider. I work in the community. I coach soccer. I'm a Girl Scout leader. But now I come to you for help and I feel threatened. And that's not okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Jan Swatney Jones. Following Jan is Susan Peshi.
Thank you, Mayor Lee and City Councilman. I want to make some general comments also on the trauma center. And first, I want to thank Councilman Swin for having the meeting on Friday. It was the first actual public meeting where we got to at least hear what's going to happen in our neighborhood. It was a little frustrating because some of us would have liked to counter some of the, we had a pitch from Mr. Broome from the Sacramento Economic Development Group or whatever about what's going to happen to our town. It would have been nice to basically counter that, but I want to be clear on that, that was the first time that we've heard anything. The developer was not very forthcoming, but we did learn some things. CNU has bought some additional property north of Velcro Boulevard, which raises questions about the actual scope of this project. The, it was clear from the developer that funding sources for the project do not appear to be secure. And we'll note that while CNU has built a pharmacy school here, they are not, as far as we understand, an experienced developer of large-scale trauma centers. There does not appear to be any arrangement with any recognized insurance carriers questioning, raising the questions of who's basically going to use this hospital. It is possible, it turns out, that the existing businesses which we use, like Miyabi, which is a great sushi bar, and I know you're familiar with it, basically go away and nothing replaces them. And that is one of our biggest fears. The city requires no financial security, that existing businesses can be destroyed without recourse. I'm told it's all private property. I'm a lawyer, I understand private property, but to me, this is raising some significant questions. The staff could not identify any other location in Elk Grove where existing businesses that serve a community such as ours is being destroyed in order to bring in a larger project that some people may think is a wonderful idea. And, you know, this is strange for us because of the unfortunate experience that this community has had with the ghost mall, okay? Which was another brilliant idea that happened a while ago and it was actually being developed by people who appeared to know what they're doing and it's now being raised, okay? We don't want that to happen in our neighborhood. I lived there when there was nothing but tumbleweeds in that lot and I don't want it to go back to tumbleweeds. So Stone Lake runs the risk of having our neighborhood businesses destroyed, which should be a warning to other small businesses throughout Elk Grove that, you know, anything can happen to you, anything can and will potentially happen to you. So just in closing, that trauma center does not belong in our quiet neighborhood in the middle of a bird preserve. There may be other places for it, you've already cited one hospital in Elk Grove. It does not belong in our community and I think you've been hearing that pretty consistently throughout the evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I am Barbara Patterson and I want you to know that the following statement is my personal opinion based on my observations of what has been transpiring in the last two months by the Elk Grove City Government. I have lived here for almost 10 years, but have extended family that have lived here since the 1930s. My grandchildren and great-grandchildren have attended school here and are attending school here. My daughter is buried in the cemetery here. I am in, I am here to demand that Mayor Steve Lee and Councilman Darren Swin and any other member of this council who has received campaign funds or other gifts, whether monetary or otherwise, from Alvin Chung, CNU, or any management staff member or investor of CNU to at least recuse themselves from being involved in any way in the process of the application and approval of this monstrous hospital. Thank you. By your constant public comments showing how much you support this project, you have made it clear that you don't care what it will do to the housing community and the small business owners in the Stone Lake landing. You have accepted large cash contributions to your campaigns and use the CNU facility for personal events. This is a direct violation of the Elk Grove Code of Ethics as follows. Under responsibility, I understand that the community expects me to serve with dignity and respect as well as be an agent of the democratic process. I avoid actions that might cause the public to question my independent judgment. I do not use my office or the resources of the city for personal or political gain. I am a prudent steward of public resources and actively consider the impact of my decisions on the financial and social stability of the city and its citizens. You have accepted this code of ethics. It is interesting that Alvin Chung made large contributions to both Steve Lee and Darren Swin during the campaigns for mayor in that way, ensuring that he had the mayor in his pocket, no matter who won. Because of the, because of these serious violations, I urge you to resign as mayor and councilman to avoid the embarrassment to avoid the embarrassment of being forced out of office for cause so the people of Elk Grove can legally vote in, hopefully ethical and truthful city leaders.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Kathy Engel. Following Kathy is Erin Herman.
And Ms. Engel submitted two videos, but I'll go by your cue as to when you want me to pull those up.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you, you didn't start me yet. I'm upset, before they started, I, you know, I don't think it's fair that I have to use my public comment to talk about what I'm going to talk about and I'm upset and I might cry. I'd like to show you a video of what took place when Steve Lee was having his big thank you for electing me event. There are many citizens who aren't comfortable with Steve Lee's cozy relationship with Alvin Chung, CEO of CNU. Alvin Chung has donated large sums of money to Steve Lee and based on what we have heard from Steve Lee's own mouth, is, he's very much in favor of this project. So we know, you'll probably vote for it, no matter how much it really stinks. Your arrogance, and I really wish you would pay attention to me when I'm speaking to you. I think that is so disrespectful when you look down like that.
Ma'am, I'm taking notes, please continue.
The arrogance of having the party at CNU and then pretending that you are impartial and that was some party, it looked like a giant wedding. It was further evidence that you don't even care about the optics of it. It's just, you know what, that's the way it is. So our group, which is called NEST, it stands for Neighbors Ensuring Stone Lake Transparency, we decided to protest. One reason was because we have so many people in our group that voted for you, lots, more than didn't. They thought that your supporters should actually know the truth. We're a grassroots organization. We made our own signs, our kids came out with us. Those of us who brought our children thought it was a wonderful example of what our country stands for. We are blessed to have a constitution that protects our right to disagree. And protest in front of a mayor's party. We had people honking and waving and giving us the thumbs up sign. Believe it or not, some of your guests even signed our petition. Fox 40 and Elk Grove News were there, as was Lance Armstrong from the Citizen. An officer from Elk Grove Police Department stopped by and Elk Grove News was there. Elk Grove PD, I heard that they were called, they just, he just wondered what was going on, it was his territory to patrol. Channel 13 stopped by too. Paul Wegstaff stopped by with some water for us and he joked, we jokingly asked him if he poisoned it and he laughed. I was hoping he'd say inconceivable, but he didn't. I did not feel threatened by him, even though he is Alvin Chung's attorney and I know that. I didn't feel the need to take his picture or video him. Then a man in a blazer, who was what I can only describe as puffed up, like what an animal does when it wants to seem bigger, came walking through quickly and taking pictures of our entire group. And I lost my place. When he came out, I don't think he took pictures of the men because he sees the men were congregated like they usually do and he seemed to walk by them. They were over by my car, which is in the photographs. And I'd like to continue, please. Would you like to ask me a question about how, the rest of my story so I can continue?
Please continue, but please wrap up as well.
When, but he might have, he might have taken pictures of the men, I honestly don't know. He began taking pictures of all of us and I asked who he was. He wouldn't tell me. He said he has a right to be there and a right to take pictures. Then he went down to where all the kids were and I wasn't cool with that. I ran back to my car and grabbed my phone and caught up with him at the corner of West Tarron and Riparian. The more the woman said to stop taking pictures of their kids, the more he seemed to do it. I asked him several times, "Who are you and what are, why are you taking pictures of people's children?" And he would not answer me. He said he didn't have to answer me and he was very aggressive, so I started videotaping him and that's what you're going to see right now. And there is a gentleman who will yield his time to me. Can you do the longer one?
Let me pull that up.
There's no sound.
It's just bad.
Okay, you would not tell us who you were before, though.
Yeah, well, you know, you're not required to.
I know you're not required to, but you know, when you're taking pictures of people's children...
I'm taking pictures of everyone around here.
And people's children.
It's everyone around here.
And people's children.
Well, if they see, if they're in the area next to anyone else, that's the way it is. So they're actively in the area, so I'm just taking pictures, keeping track.
What's the reason for you taking pictures?
Keeping track.
Oh, you're keeping track?
No different than you're taking photos of me, right?
I mean, you came into our, you know, activity.
This "our," this is the public thoroughfare.
That wasn't for pornography, child pornography purposes, was it? Taking pictures of those kids? Because you didn't take pictures of all of us adults.
I took pictures of everybody.
Did you? Okay. Because if it ends up in a, on a site that exploits those children...
That's quite an accusation, though.
Yeah, it is.
I don't think it was an accusation.
I'm taking pictures of everybody.
But someone else's child?
I'm taking pictures of everybody.
That's a little odd.
And you got a picture.
You can use my identification for that.
I'm taking pictures of everyone on the sidewalk.
Do you work for Steve?
I'm here walking on the sidewalk, taking photos as you're taking photos. Very simple, very legal.
We're not taking photos of other people's kids.
We're taking photos of me, right?
You're not a kid.
No, I'm not.
This is a representation of Steve.
You don't have the parent's permission.
Are you a representative of his?
I am someone that works for many people.
Oh, okay.
It's a clear representation. And there we can see who he works for. And I guess he used to work for Gary Davis, too. I think this speaks for itself. No citizen should have a government official taking their pictures or anybody who works for our government and saying they are keeping track of you. There was no doubt that this was meant to threaten us and intimidate us. The fact that he doesn't get why it's not okay to take photographs of young children is also really disturbing. We don't know him. Maybe he saw an opportunity where he thought the adults were not paying attention to the children and he thought they were distracted and he could grab one of those kids, we don't know. It's hard to tell in a split second, but mothers don't wait around to find out what somebody's doing when it comes to their kids. I'd also like to add that as a person of Jewish descent, I'm particularly disturbed by a public employee wanting to keep track of me. I think we all know what happened the last time the government did that. There has been a lot said about it, about if he was or was not threatening. I think the video shows that he did in fact come toward me, causing me to back up and there's just another split second video. I am appalled at the lack of response of this council. I emailed every single one of you and Darren was the only one who had the courtesy to even reply. Even if this is an internal HR thing, I think you owe it to the citizens who have to call the police because they're afraid in their own city because you sent a thug after us. He saw my car, he knows where I live. Do you know what that feels like? How would you like it if that was your wife or your daughter? Even after calling the police, I wasn't sure how long your reach was and I'm still not convinced after hearing that it was reviewed for less than an hour and, oh, there's nothing to it. As far as I'm concerned, I do not think that Ty Sorcey is fit to work for our city. I don't think he should have an employee badge to get in anywhere. He clearly has no boundaries and can't be in a position of trust. I'm asking now that he be dismissed immediately and that a formal apology be issued to every person who is terrorized by his actions. And I'd like to add that a member of my family had to go back into therapy because they have anxiety. And I think we already read the code of ethics and we know what stands on that. And I would like to know if any of you, you know, you talked to Catherine Yang when she was up here, if you'd like to say anything, I would love to hear from you.
Ma'am, I have a response, but we have a number of speakers, so I'll respond after all the speakers, so I hope you're okay with that, but...
Yeah, as long as it's on the record.
I do take this very seriously, ma'am.
Let's hear it now.
Well, the only problem is we have other speakers who've signed up and out of courtesy.
Would anybody like to yield their time for the response?
So, members of the council, are you okay with me responding now?
Yeah, I'll just tell you, Kathy, that I think several of us, if not all of us, have talked to the mayor behind the scenes to express that it's his problem that he has to deal with, so if he's willing to do that now...
Kathy, I don't, I apologize, I don't recall getting an email because I'm very diligent about responding, but I kind of always use the premise that you praise in public and you criticize in private. I've had conversations with the mayor about the situation as well as city staff. I've had conversations with the mayor about the situation as well as city staff, uh, and I'm not pleased with it.
And Kathy, you, you saw my response.
Yes, and Darren was very, um, you know, and I understand that there are issues that, but, um, you know, to just acknowledge that it happened and that, that it wasn't okay.
Right, so a gentleman, are you okay with me doing a quick response? Well, let me just say, you know, I'm sorry that you're, uh, this actually happened. Uh, Ty Sorsy does work for me. He works three hours a week, uh, as a, uh, external liaison outside of the mayor's office. Um, he gets paid twelve dollars an hour. Now, in his capacity on this particular day, he was not working for me as a city employee. Nonetheless, that doesn't really excuse, uh, that particular behavior. And as you've seen my statements that I've sent to all the news, uh, venue within the city of Elk Grove, this is something I take very seriously. You know, I certainly did not, uh, know that he was doing that and, um, it's something that, uh, I have been in conversation with, uh, the city attorney and also city manager on, uh, an appropriate action. Nonetheless, I have to stop there because this again is an HR issue and I have to respect his privacy as well. Um, this is, uh, you know, goes to the core of who I am. When I started politics, I started it as an activist. I was picketing. Uh, I know exactly what you guys are going through and I embrace the fact that you guys are doing it. Um, I had no issues with it. I, in fact, I encourage the fact that, that, uh, citizens in the community are standing up and voicing their opinion. And the truth of it is that I have never kept it a secret that I, uh, on the campaign side, I do receive contribution, but you know, I'm sure as the city attorney, as advisors, that's a separate thing. You're more than welcome to criticize me on that and I welcome that and that's how it's been going on. Uh, but you know, it's in, in terms of the location and, and, and why we have the celebration there, it was a place in which they offered. It was not, uh, the intent of it was not to discuss the hospital as many of the attendees that were there came inside as well. This was a public event and we welcome everyone. Uh, Mr. Waxstaff who came out and offered the water, it was under my request. I'd said, you know what? We should be more than willing to invite, uh, some of the members of the public to come in. This is not restrictive. This is for the community and we would, uh, you know, welcome everyone. His suggestion was, hey, are you okay with me taking some of your water outside? I said, that's fine. And so I'm glad, uh, that you guys are out there. It's important for us to have a transparent dialogue about this. This process is very long. Uh, as I've detailed in the statement which I release, um, this is not over. This is just the beginning. And for each and every one of you who, uh, have concerns of, for it, I encourage you to continue that. Now, in the matter of, uh, Mr. Ty Sorsy, that is still, uh, being looked at. Uh, there are no actions at the moment.
Does he work for CNU also?
No, he does not. Well, that I know, he does not.
So he, so, so he is going to be continuing representing my city and I get to pay his...
No, I did not say that. I'd say that we are looking at it and an action has not been taken.
Oh, okay. That there, somebody's looking at it.
Uh, yes, uh, between myself, the city attorney and the city manager, we are examining the details and one of the videos that you submitted, we have not seen. And so that also, uh, is additional information, uh, for, for me.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't have that on video.
So if you have additional videos, please send them in my direction. Uh, I do take this very seriously.
And I would like to acknowledge that it, that, because a lot of people in the city are saying, well, he has a right, it's a sidewalk, doesn't matter if it's legal. It was inti, it was intended to intimidate. Whether you sent him or not, it was pretty clear.
I understand.
Okay.
Right. It is very serious. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Aaron Herman. Following Aaron is Mark Graham.
So I thought I'd yield my time to Kathy, but if I may, I can say a few words or...
You can, you, you just go ahead and say, you know, make it quick, yeah.
Okay, sure. Um, so I've never been up to address you guys before. I would just like to say that I've been a nineteen year resident of Elk Grove and a thirteen year resident of Stone Lake. I've been raising my four children in the Stone Lake community. It's such a wonderful community and I think that, um, I'd just like to say that it's not who's right in this, it's what's right. And that hospital and that location is not right and I think you all know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Graham. Following Mark Graham is Trina Priest. Following Amanda is Michael Menaski.
Hi, um, this is the first time I've come and I wasn't going to come. I was gonna have Kathy speak on my behalf, um, but I decided that it was best if I did this myself. Um, it was my children who were photographed the other day. They're ten and seven. My daughter was the one that pointed it out. She's seven. And she was like, mommy, why is that man taking my picture? I was, a word I shouldn't say, here. Regardless of the legality of Mr. Sorsy's presence and the right to photograph the people holding the protest, ethics need to be questioned in this situation. As Americans, we have the right to peacefully assemble and question the decisions of our lawmakers. As a mother, I see value in showing this to my children. It is American value that we should all uphold. For a city employee to attempt to intimidate and catalog people exercising this right for unknown reasons is infuriating and it should be stopped immediately. Any pictures obtained should be destroyed, especially those of my children. My husband is with my children right now and he sent a, a statement as well. He said, as a father, I have to question why my children were being photographed by a random man in the crowd. In today's society, you never know the ulterior motives of some individuals. This gentleman eventually claimed he was there working for the city. Why he needs to take pictures of children is beyond me. I'm not necessarily making accusations, but from day one, the city and CNU have been conducting business in a manner that raises huge concerns. Between their poor communication and lack of transparency, our city leaders should be questioned. Why are they really pushing for this hospital to be built? I have been working in the medical field for over twenty years. From my perspective, it is obvious that this hospital is not needed in this part of Elk Grove. My wife and I have been using South Sacramento Kaiser for over ten years for our children and for ourselves without any issues. Even emergent situations are not an issue since it is a short drive, even from Stone Lake, especially now with the new I-5 off-ramp from Consumnis River. There are already plans for Dignity to build a hospital down the street less than three miles away. Why build CNU and have yet another hospital within a three mile epicenter? It seems as though our city officials have ulterior motives and Elk Grove residents should demand to hear what they are. I also work in the healthcare field. I work at South Sacramento Kaiser. I was there when they turned into a trauma unit. I have no idea how CNU plans to have that approved. I was there for all of the approval processes from the county and the state for a trauma center. Kaiser had a hard time getting that. So how we think this is going to happen for a, a hospital that has never had any experience building a hospital, managing a hospital, I have no idea. I also know how medical coverage works. I asked the question at the meeting the other night, which Mr. Chung really had a hard time answering. I said, Kaiser, Sutter, Dignity, all these different places are the insurance carriers for the people of Elk Grove. How are they going to retain patients past the acute stages of an emergency? They're not. All of those, uh, insurance carriers are gonna repatriate their patients to their respective hospitals. Nobody is going to pay CNU to provide care. And he says he hopes that they will allow for that. I highly doubt it. We're less than five, ten miles away, maybe. There's no way. It seems like a very bad business plan.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Michael Menaski. Following Michael Menaski is Stacy Anderson.
It appears the mayor is in the spotlight again. Mayor Lee is either clueless about his aides' behaviors or he fully supports, uh, Mr. Sorsy's actions. Those actions include passing an automatic rifle as an award to former Mary, Mayor Gary Davis, endorsing sister cityhood with a Nigerian prince precisely five years ago to this day in whose province the murderous thugs continue to operate the notorious anti-West Islamic terrorist group Boko Haram. And just this last weekend bodily forcing his way through a small group of Elk Grove residents in a legitimate quiet protest outside the mayor's election celebration party hosted by a private school of pharmacies seeking to build a controversial, controversially located hospital. Oh, and let's not forget the pictures he menacingly took of the children of the protesters. Sorsy has passed professional ties to Beal Air Force Base known for maintaining unmanned drone reconnaissance attack planes at which anti-war activists regularly demonstrate. Mayor Lee is to Donald Trump as Ty Sorsy is to National Security Advisor John Bolton insofar as Lee and Trump are both chief executives and Sorsy and Bolton have executed disastrously failed public policies expounded by their bosses. One can only wonder what the future holds for this duo in pending embarrassments to the city. Elk Grove's Mayor Lee has been admonished by his city council colleagues regarding his overuse of taxpayer-paid personal staff and intentions to pad his own wealth, making the mayor's office a paid position. It's time for the mayor to abandon these power-grabbing pipe dreams and it's time for the council to strip him of these perks. It's an unanswered question why the police, who were present during the incident, these incidents, did not arrest Mr. Sorsy for bodily pushing his way against at least one of the protesters and photographing their kids and then also asking him to show what he had done on his phone. Mr. Sorsy should be in jail, not a city employee paid with taxpayer payer funds. Bullying behavior is unacceptable whether actively executed by Mr. Sorsy or passively by Mayor Lee through his employees. It is also disturbing that the police seem to have looked askance at Mr. Sorsy's assault and battery upon otherwise peacefully protesting group. Are these the methods that the city should utilize in a conversation with its residents over making space for a private for-pro, for-profit hospital? Compassionate and cooperative people wanna know. And I'm, I'd like to add too that I've worked in the health field and, and I can say to you that if a health practitioner, a nurse, a physician, or anyone working in a hospital says to a patient something that is, um, that, that it's a requirement, you know, you will take this pill, and, uh, and then forces the pill upon them, they have not only committed assault with those words, but they've committed battery by touching that person. So I can tell you that we understand what assault and battery is, but I don't think the police department does. And so I'd like to have that looked into as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Stacy Anderson. Following Stacy Anderson is Mark Doty.
Good evening, I'm Stacy Anderson. I haven't stood up here in front of the city council or the planning commission before, although in the last forty-eight hours, you might've been hearing my voice on a certain video. Um, however, I do wanna stand up tonight because, uh, as a co-founder with Kathy Engel of Neighbors Ensuring Stone Lake Transparency, which is also NEST, it's a coalition of concerned citizens from all across Elk Grove, not just Stone Lake, Lakeside, Laguna West, but it goes all the way out to Sheldon. It goes all the way out to Old Elk Grove and beyond because people feel concerned as well about the CNU hospital. At the December twentieth press conference, our community, actually the whole city, was blindsided about plans for a hospital to be built in what is now Stone Lake Landing. It's home to several small businesses that have taken a chance on our community and have become our cherished neighbors. The proposed medical complex would destroy those businesses as we know them. We've heard comments about, oh, it's only six or seven. No, it's not. That's in the first phase. It's up to fifteen, including all data by the time this mayor may not be completed, which according to former mayor Gary Davis, could take up to ten years. At an information session regarding this project, it was stated by a city official that this would be the largest undertaking of its kind in our city. That sounds impressive, but in reality, it's alarming because the city doesn't exactly have a portfolio of success with major projects. I'm reminded of the last major project, which is not, which is not so affectionately called the Elk Grove Ghost Mall. The failure of that project alone should be the signal of a huge red flag waved in front of the proposed California North State University Medical Complex. With no clear financial plan being presented to the public, lack of transparency, and with CNU having no experience whatsoever with developing and running such an enormous facility, it is reckless to sacrifice our cherished small businesses, our neighbors, for the chance of hitting black on the roulette wheel of financial help. This is not a time to be chasing the city's losses, as they say in Las Vegas. This is not a time to gamble the financial well-being and the reputation of our city on an organization that has zero track record of success and has displayed an egregious lack of transparency thus far. I ask you to consider, what do you want your legacy to be? Do you wanna be known as the politician who risks the financial well-being of their city on another likely to fail project, which is probably going to become the Elk Grove Ghost Hospital? Or do you want to have your legacy be that of a representative of our city who values the efforts and contributions of its small businesses and who takes to heart the concerns and well-being of your constituency? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mark Doty. Following Mark is Mimi DeVille.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Uh, I wanted to talk on two topics and one will be the hospital. I'll save that for the end. Uh, second, uh, I actually sent an email off to, uh, Ryan Chapman, the, uh, engineer for traffic. He's awesome, by the way. Uh, I'm hoping to get a response back, but can we get some left turn lanes where we have a left blinking yellow light? I'm tired of sitting at all these lights around town, Laguna Boulevard, they had a red light, nobody's coming from, you know, the opposite direction and you're just sitting there. Old Creek and Laguna Boulevard is a perfect example. I lived there for eleven years and it was a nightmare, sitting at this light forever. Anyway, they do it all over the state. I don't know why we don't have any that I'm aware of in the city. Anyway, just wanted to, um, throw that out there. Anyway, so I, uh, Ryan's all over it, so, uh, anyway, I just wanted to bring it up here. So, um, on the hospital, uh, I wanted to say a couple of things. Uh, one, I went to the meeting that was on Friday night and Darren, you did an excellent job and it was a hostile, kind of a hostile environment. Um, you did the best you could do, um, under the circumstances. A couple of things to just note is you guys look like you're wanting to approve this. I mean, when the, the announcement came out, uh, I believe most, if not all of you were standing at, uh, CNU's campus, you know, just the optics. Uh, I, I understand the process of how this has to go through approvals and so on, uh, but the optics just don't look good. In fact, I went to home, looked at the news that night and it said, okay, we're gonna talk to somebody that's in, in favor of the hospital and somebody that's against it. And Darren was the one that was talking in favor of it, um, even though you weren't really, but you know, the way they cut up news and so on. Anyway, um, just wanted to throw that out there that, uh, the optics don't look good. The day that this was announced, one thing that, that really got me is just the location. Um, it's just a weird location. I mean, they, sure, they wanna put it there, it's private property and so on, but it's this very western edge of Elk Grove, way to the south. As a member on the trails committee and, uh, an advocate for active transportation, I don't know how you get there from pocket area without going on I-5. And, uh, at hospitals, especially such, a hospital such as this, it's gonna be a trauma center, you're gonna see a lot of people on bikes, homeless population, people, you know, elderly and indigent, et cetera. Um, it's, you know, it's just a weird spot. There's the buffer lands from the sewer treatment plant that are, you know, a barrier to that, you know, there's no bus lines over there. Buses can be, you know, rerouted. I'm sure there's some things that can be done there, but anyway, I just thought it's just a weird spot. And then, um, finally, cause I wanna be respectful of time, uh, if this was Kaiser or Sutter or Dignity, I think you'd get a lot less pushback. This CNU outfit just seems kind of fly-by-night. Um, you know, it, it's their business model and if they wanna go for it, but it, you know, I think you'd get a lot less pushback if you were working with one of those, uh, other organizations, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mimi DeVille. Mimi DeVille. Following Mimi is Randy Becker.
Hi there. Haven't seen you guys in a long time. I'm back. Uh, okay. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find many people who do not expect integrity and transparency from our elected... from our elected officials. It's one thing to campaign on a dream of bringing a hospital to Elk Grove, Mr. Mayor. It's a completely different animal when you're already meeting and making promises to that hospital and intentionally wait until after elections to announce it to the affected residents. You knew about this for at least a year. You were elected to represent us, and that responsibility encompasses open communication. We have newsletters, we have plenty of locations to host neighborhood town halls. By the way, thank you Darren for stepping up and doing that. That's something I would have expected the mayor to do. Is it too much to expect the mayor, the highest-elected position in the city, to know the communities he represents before imposing his will on us? I live in Lakeside, and I'd like to give a little bit of insight to what drove me to purchase a home in Lakeside in 1999. I bought a lot in a master-planned community. Lakeside is built around a quiet lake with shaded jogging paths, small neighborhood businesses, community parks, a smart growth plan, and easy access to the freeway. It was the perfect place to raise a family and have a smart commute channel with I-5. Stone Lake was built across the road in a similar manner a few years later, but sits next to the Wildlife Preserve. Both of our communities border Elk Grove Boulevard, both are governed by HOAs, and both communities rely on that access to I-5 for commuting. Did you know the entrance to the Stone Lakes Wildlife Preserve is right at the end of Elk Grove Boulevard? And it's right where it'll be walking distance from where this 12-story thing is proposed to go? Sorry, I'm a little bit upset, so I'm getting worked up here. Did you know our commute corridor is already congested at 6:30 a.m.? The number of cars entering I-5 from Elk Grove Boulevard exceeds the capacity of the freeway. High-rises and medical offices were not part of any plan for this community. In fact, I believe that hospitals are prohibited by the current plan. I don't want to imply that I can't accept or understand that change happens, but change must be reasonable, well-planned, and fit within the neighborhood scheme. Changing our master-planned communities into a biotech district is not reasonable and does not fit into our neighborhood scheme. It's not in the city's general plan either, but I understand you are proposing that plan, changing that plan to designate portions of our community as employment centers, which would enable a hospital, just one more minute, to replace a retail center. I shouldn't have had to read a 500-page document to learn that, and I shouldn't have to hear it from my more woke neighbors. Transparency means you tell us before your friends buy the empty lot across from the preschool. Transparency means you tell us you're negotiating with Alvin Chung and friends to rezone Stone Lake Landing before half of Elk Grove reelected you. Why didn't you disclose it? Why didn't you tell us you wanted to change our community into a biotech district? Why can't you answer if the project is financed by foreign investments? CNU is already paying businesses off and proceeding as if this is a done deal. That makes me wary. And it makes me wonder if we're just going through a fruitless process of assessing environmental impact and seeking public input, if you've already green-lighted this 12-story building smack dab where we enter and exit an already overcrowded freeway. And of course, there's a small chance that this plan is rejected, and then we're left with another ghost mall because they already kicked the tenants out. Forgive me if it seems like I'm thinking the worst will happen, but it has happened, and we've lived with that mistake for 10 years already. We're upset about this, we have a right to express our viewpoints, we have a right to peacefully protest without city officials attempting to intimidate us. I'd like to know why our external affairs liaison was sent out to photograph and track our families at a peaceful protest. Are you putting the photos in a lineup book? Are you creating a dossier of citizens who don't agree with you? Are you planning to bully us into submission? What were you thinking? I really want to know. Those are my questions. I'd like answers, and I'd like you to communicate your plans in plain English to the residents impacted by your plan. Thank you. I'm sorry, one more thing. On the way over here, I was driving down Big Horn, and I suddenly looked up and noticed there's a surgical center there? And it's like, wow, and there's Sutter over there, and there's this big empty lot at the end of the block. There's your biotech district. What made you think it was okay to plop it down in the middle of master-planned communities? It fits over there by the other medical places. There's no backyards to look into. There's no upset residents. It's a medical industry. Why can't you tell your friends to move it? Put it over there. Don't start digging up the ground, which by the way, they're already doing. You keep telling us this isn't a done deal, but they already paid to move the barber shop, they're buying them all this new stuff, they closed off the parking lot, and we're digging into the soil. So they're proceeding as if this is a done deal. And I feel like it is, because you're sneaking changes into the general plan that would make it okay to rezone it without anybody knowing. Am I paranoid, is that what's going on? Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Our next speaker is Randy Becker. Following Randy is Sonia Valverde.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Soon for having the town hall meeting. To be truthful, a number of community members approached Darren and asked for that town hall meeting. He didn't say that the other day, but that's the truth. A few weeks ago, I burnt your guys' ears over this issue. Welcome to the new norm. Mayor, the honeymoon is over. I didn't vote for you. I respect you as a person, but unfortunately, the honeymoon is over. What I learned Friday night was you and your buddy Chung sit on a board together. A few weeks ago, one of their employees stood right here and lied to the community, to the city, and also Mr. Soon, as you called her doctor, as we found out the next day who the hell she really was. I told you guys the other day, I was pretty pissed off, but this is what pissed off looks like. And if you guys want to have council meetings till tomorrow morning, welcome aboard, because this is it, folks. Tell the staff to have one item on the agenda. Public meeting. Public comment. Because I don't know what the hell you expect to get done tonight, besides listen to people. I realize the incident with Sorsy is a private matter. If that happened in the private sector, if I said those words to my former company's customers, I'd have been fired on the spot. There's no question, but government works very slow and privately. I've read your comment, Mr. Mayor, and if you believe in transparency in this process, you will recuse yourself immediately. We're in an election in a year and a half. As you know, I supported another candidate. But I reached out and gave you the opportunity to be my mayor. Unfortunately, you wasted that in my eyes. Lastly, for those of you that believe in by-district voting, you will have two votes, not five. Understand, this project, you would only have two votes. You better start thinking about that, because five people represent you and five people will be able to vote on it. So I'm telling you right now, if you want by-district voting, you will have Mr. Soon and the mayor. The other three gets a free pass. So while you guys want to enjoy the importance of making change to by-district voting, understand what you're asking for, because it will be the biggest bite in your rear end, because it will be misused, because all you got to do is look to Sacramento to see the dog and pony show and the circus that comes out of there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Our final speaker is Sonia Valverde.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Valverde, and I've been a resident of Elk Grove since 1993. I too live in Stone Lake, and I'm here with my colleagues, the NEST. I'd like to talk to you about the lack of transparency, results in distrust, and a deep sense of insecurity. That is a quote from the Dalai Lama. That quote is particularly true as it pertains to elected officials and the public they serve. Wouldn't you agree? That quote is at the core of NEST's existence. The public has been told by this legislative body, staff, and consultants, including former Mayor Gary Davis, that we are in the early-stage process of the proposed CNU hospital, and that you did not know about the project until December of 2018. Even though NEST members have been told that the city council and the staff only knew about the project last December, the following email was disseminated throughout the community. Because of the contents of the email, the public would like to know on record exactly when each member of the Elk Grove City Council was first told, either in private, in a briefing, or at, or any meeting, or through any other form of communication, when each of you first knew about the proposed CNU hospital. The above-mentioned email was sent to a member of the community who pressed City of Elk Grove Economic Developer Darrell Doan at the town hall meeting last Friday about the project after comments initiated by Barry Broome, who is the president and CEO of Greater Sacramento Economic Council, when he publicly stated that he had been talking to Darrell for some time about the project. Mr. Doan's email states, and I quote, "But since you ask, let me be crystal clear. I first became aware of the project as an early concept around July 2017. Let me repeat this critical piece of information. Not shared at the town hall meeting when Mr. Doan was questioned, Mr. Doan knew about the proposed hospital project as far back as July 2017." Continuing with the email from Mr. Doan, I engaged, quote, "I engaged CNU under a verbal confidential agreement which is standard. I advised them on properly navigating the city's entitlement process. I evaluated and rejected an incentive request, which I referred publicly at the meeting Friday. I engaged them in evaluate other properties, I encouraged them to evaluate other properties, and I advised them strongly that they should engage business and community groups prior to submitting an application. I don't normally talk about confidential business matters unless the law compels me to do so, or until the business makes its plans public, and even then, only if asked. These are the requirements of fulfilling my duties as the city's economic development director while balancing transparency and the law." End of quoted email. In light of this email, we now ask, when each of you advised of the proposed CNU hospital, please answer one by one for the public. Can you answer when each of you were advised?
Ma'am, this is not a conversation. Go ahead and make your statement for the record.
Okay.
We have another speaker behind you.
Well, I will end with a quote from Merrick Garland, and also speak of NEST's core of values, should also be yours. Transparency in government, no less than transparency in choosing government, remains a vital national entrance in democracy. And I would like to know, as I'm sure all of my colleagues would, when each of you were advised of this proposed hospital.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Ken Belt.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I've never addressed the council before, and I've never been motivated to, but I'll tell you that video motivated me to. I live in Stone Lake, been there about six years, and spent the last couple of days going over this proposed general plan, so I'm actually here just to speak specifically about that, because I think that it's very apparent from the conversations that I've heard tonight and from what I've read, that the planning for this hospital project has been probably a couple of years in the making, because it's apparent that it will require a significant change in the zoning regulations in the city for this hospital to be possible. And so I have three points that I just want to bring up to make sure that we have, in an open forum, addressed these issues. One is that we, the city is engaging in designating these employment centers, all right? I want the planners to explain to me why you would designate two parcels six miles away from the other areas designated as employment centers, when the purpose of the designation of an employment center is to concentrate large, higher-paying jobs, all right? And so my conclusion is that this is part of a plan to make it easier for us, or for the city council, or for the planners, to transition those two properties into a different zoning, which would make it possible for this hospital to be constructed without special-use permits or any other sort of debate with the public. So, when looking at the plan that's presented on the website, it's very confusing as to what those designations are really going to be. There's some serious inconsistencies with the plan that is in place right now as far as light industrial and commercial versus the proposed changes, which would essentially eliminate those limitations. And I don't see anywhere else in the general plan where the city is changing significantly the zoning regulations that affect the property as much as this particular change does. And it's, so anyways, there's that. I also want to note that as an opposition to this project, that the city even recognizes in 3-2 of the general ledger that higher-intensity built environments have a distinctly different feel and character than surrounding neighborhoods. This project absolutely is characteristic of a project that doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. You don't see 12, 13-story buildings surrounded by homes, especially for those of us that bought homes or have lived in the community, and we specifically bought there because it's at the end of a road, we're surrounded by a nature preserve, we don't have to worry about large construction projects or huge amounts of traffic. So, in your consideration of the general plan, I really encourage you guys to take a second look and not accept this plan with the changes that you're recommending. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, Sonia. I'm going to do a quick question. I'm going to do a quick question. I'm going to do a quick question.